Should we have let Janice and Kristen go first so they can get out? Because I doubt they want to sit through our stuff, okay.
They'll do that.
All right, so Janice, we'll start with you.
Hi, everybody, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So I'm here just to kind of see what you might have in mind as far as transportation. We do currently take appointments for out-of-town appointments for Culver citizens on a need basis. We do shopping down there on Wednesday afternoons. Currently, we usually only have one person that's taking advantage of that right now. But if I'm sure there would be a need for more if we want to have a van, you know, in the mornings down there or a couple of days a week where they would stay down there, either, you know, half a day or a full day and be available for people that want to go shopping or to events, things like that.
So I think last year, what is your level we were at?
It was four thousand.
Three thousand?
It's been three thousand the last, I'm sorry, it was four thousand. That invited us in 2020.
Uh huh.
It would take three thousand.
Today, okay. Janice, I read your report, I think that you sent Jonathan, can you hear us okay?
Yeah, there's some feedback, but I think I can get you all right.
Okay, it sounded like last year we went up to four thousand hoping to cover more, like daily trips or more instances or need. Is that, I know you said something about possibly purchasing another vehicle. Are those sort of things on a horizon for transportation or?
Right, well, because of this whole CARES Act, we actually switched our budget starting in 2000, or starting in July 1st. So we've already ordered our vehicles for 2021. We believe that Indap is going to pay for them, sort, you know, the CARES Act is going to pay for part of our operating fund and they believe that the state transportation fund will pay for the match for the vehicles. So we're kind of good on vehicles for next year. If that's what you were looking at, it would probably be 2022. But certainly, we can, if we can get some additional operating funds, we can commit a van and a driver at this point or going forward in 2021 to more time down in Culver. And we did, we talked with Jonathan, I think, back in February and kind of approached it the same way. And he thought, we talked once about maybe doing a survey down there. I'm not sure how that would be handled or done, but, you know, we could certainly do something like that to kind of see what kind of need there is down there.
Any thoughts or questions you guys?
I guess my one question is, would kind of see would be attached to additional drivers?
I couldn't hear that question.
Kind of see you talking for additional service in this area.
Well, we figured that a route, which is, we run about eight to nine routes every day. So we're talking like an eight-hour day, five days a week. And that runs about, would run us around 30,000 for the year. So, you know, if you're dividing that by five, be, you know, 6,000 if you want to go one day all year. If you, if you want, you know, to help out with a driver and a van two days, it'd probably be around 12,000.
Right now, Culver on an as-me-in-a-basis versus a permanent route?
We could do that, yes, and that's kind of what we do now. Like I said, they, you know, they can call, anyone in the county can call us and make an appointment. What we found here in Plymouth is we started a call when you need us, cab kind of service. And that just exploded for us and that was, you know, several years ago that we started that. We started at the end of 2011 and our trips almost doubled the next year. People just, you know, when they want to go somewhere, they, they want to go right then. And so generally speaking, probably 60% of our, our total trips are right here in Plymouth calling like a cab. And I think we would get more people using, using it in Culver if we had that option.
One of the, one of the things that I noticed as I reviewed your other solicit, with our $3,000 contribution, basically we're at about 1.5% of your, your revenue with that $21,000. The other side though, as you look at 2000, 2049, 2069 rides, that's at about 7%, so it's, or 3%, sorry. So basically, we're funding about aspects of the rides. You know, so I think that's somewhat a community for us, even if it's existing, we can do something better.
Any other thoughts or questions for Janice or?
Well, I think if you're going to do any survey or something like that, the local point, do either have something for the people to pick up and throw out or whatever, it could be available at Town Hall, at Windowland and just pick it up, throw it out on the block at all, and we get it through. That would be a central location point to do that.
Is that, is, are those dollars coming out of the Clark's budget or casino?
No.
Okay. Okay, all right, well, before you guys, any other questions for Janice? We can let her off the line and, okay, great, thanks so much for the update.
You bet, thank you very much for the opportunity. If I can help with a survey or anything like that, we have done those in the past, so just let me know how I can help.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I thought we would hear from Kristen because she also has to get on the road, pick up kids and deal, boys and girls who have kids, I'm sure. Kristen, you want to sort of speak to us about the club needs?
Yeah, so for those of you who don't know, I'm Kristen, saying I'm the Boys and Girls Club. We just opened yesterday with a school and like most businesses and nonprofits, we, we really suffered with COVID. If you guys could consider the $2,500 that you give us, sorry, that would be really appreciated. We, we were unable to run our auction this year, which is normally we bring in about $25,000 and then over summer we couldn't run, it was our pit shop program and we usually bring in around average of $15,000. So that was really big hit for us among our other fundraisers and brands that we bring in usually to over $100,000 a year. We have applied for special other grants, obviously, just like everybody else has to try to make up for that money. But we would like to request you to consider possibly next year and moving on, giving us $5,000 as opposed to $2,500. Obviously, $2,500 is still a lot of money and that helps out, anything helps. But if that's something that you are able to adjust your budget for us and do $5,000, that would be great. But for this year, the $2,500 would be the best ask, if you guys would consider that for us. You know, or we need to hear back from the grants that we've applied for that hopefully will really help us out, but we're really struggling to figure out how we're going to make ends meet this year with all of the deficit that we're in now, so.
Any questions for Kristen?
I have a question, this Karen, I know, I think you told us the other day, but I forgot. We, we anticipated loans from the local, I know we, we balance definitely because of what's happening with the casinos. Do you know what our comparison is on that, what the balances are?
I think the balance, we remember quite quickly last week or the other day, I think it's right around $20,000 or balance and we're anticipating about $4,000. It's a, it's a, it's a red gas.
Previous years had been more like eight, but I have a.
And it's basically $8,000.
Yeah, I think the reason we built up that fund a little, we wouldn't do years without using it at all.
I think the only thing that was coming out of it was.
Yeah, for a long time. And every now and then, I think, kind of at your house, when they still existed, came in, we did a small amount for them as well. Yeah, it seems like that was it.
And we kind of used this, like, kind of as a network, kind of like this, of course, organizations.
And, and we talked about this later, you know, also, is that the restrictions on these dollars are not the same as they are on tax dollars, but then, but basically, they make a difference.
Basically, the guideline is any, is like, how, or is it any allowable use? So it doesn't give you a specific, you can use it for this and you can't use it for that, but I feel like these, these monies are a little bit of a, they're probably tax law state.
And the only, this big program for funding out at this point for next year are the Lake Cage, the Council on Aging and the Boys and Girls Club.
Correct.
All right, Janice, I realized this budget, I think Kristen needs to come to our board meeting on the 25th and request, what do you got tonight?
Well, actually, she just sent me an invoice, you guys are arguing, you guys approved it. You approved it last time.
So she's just, she's just visiting, okay.
Okay, that's why I thought for this year.
Okay, so this is, I didn't want to make sure.
Okay. Okay, so then, moving on, we're just talking about where we're going after this year.
Okay.
What did we write up?
Sure.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Kristen before she leaves? All right, great, thank you, thanks Kristen.
Thank you for your time, have a good night, guys.
Yeah, so she has township here, do you want to move on to?
Yeah, I can, all three budgets that we did, we're, we're, we services and township, so.
Who's got enough phone for that, because I know, I see Amber here for Park, but we have, can Amber find you? Are you here? All right, so we've just got EMS and Park right now, right? There weren't a whole lot of changes to the property, so you can have it on. Let's do that one last bit, so we can get through Amber, like, we can do Park EMS first. Do you have a question that we're trying to want to look at first?
Maybe.
All right, we're open. Let's start with Park, if you don't mind. All right, Amber, you and Jonathan just walk us through any key changes you guys have made and?
Yeah, so there weren't a lot of changes, like, anything significant happening. You could tell the first item that missed was salary, you could tell we got in 2019, essentially, we kind of got close to that $200,000 mark, so we just bumped it up $5,000 just to meet that, especially with the increases this year, so we predicted we'd be that much. Long W is the same. Go down, laws and EMS, we took that down to 500, so from 5,000 to 4,500. That was just because we weren't, we speak it all up every year, so we kind of bumped it down a little bit. We figured, oh, this suffice. Trying to go down, see what changes are next, air supply, which is safe. We increased postage, like, part of the, yeah, $20,000. I want to see, I do know some, some of the bigger items that were changed, I do know of. One of them was, where is it, machinery and equipment. We can bump that up from 5,000 to 10,000 and the reasoning for that was our anticipation for upcoming projects. So the first one being expansion of the security camera system. As you guys know, we had security cameras installed to overlook the access and we're looking to expand it and go and look over the beach and inside the concession stand and we'll keep all the money, so we figured that was pretty important. And then also, another project we're looking for this future is renovating and improving the basketball court. I don't know if it's noticed, but it could be some improvements. So that's kind of one area we allocated a little bit more money for those two particular projects. And then another line item where we did add some more money was building improvements and this was also anticipation of some upcoming projects. Once again, to one of them being the gazebo and the renovations, so that would be similar, that would be the East Pavilion, sorry, the West Pavilion. We, you know, we're kind of looking toward the future of doing the same thing to the East Pavilion, so we're trying to allocate those types of funds to those future projects. Do you remember anything else you made? I really think that was the only major areas we had made changes, everything else is pretty consistent with previous years.
The income wise, as, you know, since you're very good at cars income, eh, eh, you know, just ballparking it a little bit lower than expected, so that it can come higher. If the tax rate is so low, obviously, you contribute the $6,000 that you've been through in the past. Well, if the tax rate is willing to contribute the $6,000, which is every, then in the past, to the park, like it will pretty much at least break even in the past, yeah, that, that is a game.
You have $6,000 every six months, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, $12,000.
Do you know what the total income is for that?
Um, I can give you, 2019, it was 283,800. And year to date, which would be, on this, it would be up to 2,000. Anyway, 176,500.
And did I hear it last week, all of the local?
Yeah, they certainly moved in next year as well, so, and also more of a speed this year too, so, a lot of that popular new spirit that's seen as well.
So this doesn't include July's income?
Correct, it just goes to you.
Okay.
Mainly because it's the, you need six months and that's when we, we have our, the gateway for the part of the, of the contest.
As you three know, all the.
Correct.
Yeah, but some of that income came at the end of last year, so we'll get some more bulk left income at the end of this year.
So we did contract through those, so that, we get them off certainly before October and even earlier this year, but a lot of that money is absent across, so a lot of bulk left for 2021 will be processed this year, about, so.
So I think out of the 180,000, what, like, maybe 40,000 or something comes in before the end of the year. It's really for next year, but they pay at the end of the year.
So there's potentially about 40 more thousand from years and 20,000 from July to hit this number.
Um, yeah, I can give you the July, I don't know exactly, it's just one of it. There's about 20,000, 19852.
Ooh, good guess.
It was.
19852, okay.
19852. The amount we collected in 2019 for 2020 mostly was 46,000. And take, and then the total of that season was 110,000.
I'm surprised we're even close to last year when the restrictions we want on each front.
Yes, yeah, we're up this year, it was pretty. Because you were the only one to have.
Yeah.
You were the only one to have. We could do things, so.
Yeah.
They would split kayaks and island board sales would be this year.
And that income does not include the tax income here?
Um, it does include the property tax.
Okay.
And, and it's been the last couple of years, you see that $25,000.
Okay. Okay. Any comments or questions or anything for Amber on that?
Well, Amber, you're, you're the one with the best.
Yeah.
If you see it.
Yeah. Yeah, we're in the, post that through there. I did have someone contact me on Messenger who's helping with that fundraiser to the basketball court and they wondered if the council or the park or both would approve renaming the court as, in memory of this young man that they're raising the money to do renovation for. I wonder if that's something the council board, the council would be open to that? What your thoughts are there? I didn't, I told her it would have to come before the government agencies over the park, that we couldn't just tell her yes, but that if, you know, if this group felt like that was okay, I don't want to get our hopes up without hearing from all of you, what your thoughts are on that. So I don't know if they would call it the Alice Parry Court or Parade Court or what that would look like, but they're wanting to know if they raised funds to help renovate it, if it could be named in his memory. We've never heard that come to us before, I don't think. Not, not today, I don't think.
It's been a while.
So, do you guys have any thoughts on it?
I know they were asking what, and then the fight started, and some of that, you know.
Yeah, absolutely, I think there is a significant, and I know it's, especially this for the youth and the community, I think it's something, but a place for them, kind of a go-to and enjoy and remember, I think it's a lovely idea. I think a lot of our youth was affected, and so, I think it's a very.
I would leave that, I would like support. And then if you think about that.
It seems like a good healing process for some of them and maybe a way to draw attention to the fact that this issue exists in our community and is something that these kids should feel like they can talk about.
I think there's a lot of programming that can be tied to that. Basically, what it seems, so that's a lot of work being made after, after human issues. Like, personally, the, the, the team's deal with our, so we're, this is.
I think it's great that they're raising the money, but I think everyone should remember, whatever we do now, we'll set the priorities.
You can save your money for the end of the year. I mean, it's, it's a community something, but, but basically, this part contributes, we can save your money for the end of the year, very far.
Yeah, I guess no way you can treat it that way, it's a fundraiser.
Yeah, Matt, I mean, there's, there's, throughout the park, we've got parks and what people donate their funds for.
There's, there's, like, there's programs we're looking at in terms of, we do talk here about some senior things coming in the morning, and we've talked about other programs with new equipment and having accessibility at the, there, and moving up and making fundraisers for something that, so, particularly if they're, they're accessibility, if it's, um, if you, if you're thinking about, uh, if you, if you take the fundraising, uh, for these, so these, that's a meaning, or, or, they're associated.
Yeah, and so long as we don't drop the ball on whatever the agreement is, because we had a great fundraiser for the park, or what was it, Pickets or whatever they call it? I can't remember. No, it's a little white, yeah, oh boy, what's that? Yeah, we got some pennies for the park.
Yeah, I can remember that, and they didn't raise as much as they were hoping, so they still bought the playground equipment, but they never bought the Pickets. And, yeah, I spoke to the people who had started the club, and, like, they approached me and I spoke with Karen, and you're very clear that they, in their, were not specific about where the money was going, like, the, the basketball court improvements are not saying booths, like, not saying events, you know, or committing to something very specific because, one, you don't know how much people are raised, we can't promise everything and we're looking to your collection of whatever the family likes, so, which we don't like that, so. Yeah, we were very, very for honor, you know, and so.
Okay. Uh, something to think about, because it'll Congress, probably sooner than later, it's my guess. Any other thoughts on the park budget or questions or comments, you guys? Do you want to move on to EMS? Thank you, Amber.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for keeping your insanity all summer, too.
Absolutely.
This time of COVID, I don't know how to tell it's possible when you're on the front.
Is it sanity or insanity?
We're so unsure.
We're earlier than that.
They were, I agree, are far as, yeah, I agree, thank you.
All right.
So.
We'll look at EMS.
We already put this together, I think, before Jeff stepped in, so he can walk us through what Karen and I came up with.
Good luck.
Yeah. I, I mean, I think what we were looking at for salaries was factoring in what we had planned on hiring Jeff in at, plus 50 cents for full-time employees. And the, I believe we had factored in all the part-time employees, is that right, Karen? Yeah, so that's paramedics and EMTs we need. Before Deanna had left, we were asking around our, our part-timers and some of the other areas, what they were paying, and we're close, it's just like police, I think we're maybe a dollar below, like, what some did, Plymouth and, Deanna was in Kokomo, which we don't compete with them a lot, but some of the neighboring services were about a dollar 50 cents higher than us.
50 cents on the full time or 50 cents on the full hand?
Both, yes. And then benefits, a big change there, but the difference is just, I think Karen had already told council members that when Kathy was here, she didn't have insurance, so it's just really adding family insurance for one additional employee. I mean, it was optional for her, but she just never took it, so. Planning for, and I think Jeff probably already signed up for, for insurance with us, so. No? Need to get, get that taken care of?
You know, I did, really much job this year. Pretty much.
Through this calendar year, but.
Yeah, this is for next year.
Yeah.
Um, so those are those two changes on the personal services. Uh, I don't see any major changes to supplies. I'm just dropping down to other services and charges. Then for similar, uh, we increased insurance and bonds a little bit just based off. I, I think Karen recommended that change. Please purchase contractual services. I think those are all the same. Machinery and equipment, radios and built-in gear. There's all even service.
Is please purchase the current ambulance still being paid for? The current ambulance is our payment still. I think, does it pay back for general fund essentially? So you guys pay yours upfront. We pay ours every time. Are we up to another ambulance?
I'm low in the, that's a discussion I think we're going to have to have here in the next, you know, weeks or months of town years to try to plan for. Before the, like, end of the very end or the very beginning of this. And so I'm trying to speed up as much as I can with everything here. Um, I think, I think I may just be working on that, trying to get as much feedback as I can and put eyes on everything I possibly can.
I know.
I know the field.
We haven't been on a burger 10 years.
Yeah, it's, it's an old time. So it would be, you know, that would be next year.
Oh, is the last budget, so nine?
No. So purchase every five years, but then the vehicle is 10 years.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. Okay. We got behind on one of them.
Yeah, and the last one wasn't a full five years ago. Like three maybe? We were a couple of years behind. Yeah. So we stretched it out on the last one a little bit.
So if we do find we're going to have to run the ambulance purchase Karen's or time, we could change this we had to or?
Yeah, we got, um, I think September, the day of September, kind of the, they is one, right, is kind of like the publicist. And it's one of those states where we can, as long as we do the advertised high, we can reduce. So if you want to improve. We're actually running out of time. We're covered and then if you decide, no, we don't have to do it, take an outdoor, you know, around, you know, you can wait after the case is here. We need to think again. Get your time to step out.
Go through specs and actually get it. I think it was.
It was about 300, 300 day building. Um, so when you not knowing your, your bid cycles and when you project it, but let's say you, you know, pull out the bid and, and February, um, it's over 30 days and you're, you're letting it out on Thursday, on the mid-March. And then you're working at the end of March into a town council meeting or even the first of April. You're looking towards the end of the year, um, you're looking at the last two months of the year, November and December. This year, um, it's also a question of screen on COVID. Uh, because you know, it's an essential service. A lot of, a lot of the different vendors and manufacturers went on, um, forced shutdowns because of it. So in turn, land back of current orders. And so it would be projected out a little. They're saying, you know, 300, 300 days. The good thing is it doesn't take 300 days to build. It just takes so long to get it onto the line. Once it goes on the line, it spends about roughly eight to 12 weeks in the lines for all the processes and then it's free.
So you stay in 2021 or 2022?
I think we're saying to be determined. Jeff, are you good?
Um, well, you could, for your, for your money wise, I mean, you could do it two ways. We could bid later in the year and budget some next year, some next, you know, the following year. And then, and then get it the first part of the following year. If you order 21 and get the, the pricing, usually pricing increase for ambulances start to roll out right now. Uh, last year we had a big increase because aluminum started to become a hot commodity. So that's taking it up five to 10%. Uh, this year COVID will most definitely affect, uh, the price index. Usually you expect maybe a five to an 8% increase every year on an ambulance. Uh, so if you can, if you could bid it out next year and we could bid it out later in the year, and I say the first half of the year. And then find out on, um, a later, a first part of next year, you'll get this year's pricing and you'll get a next, uh, 2022 budget if that's, because that's what you're looking at to help, uh, things out. But.
Karen, we, I mean, we could, yeah, we could.
I'm sorry?
We could have it be able to purchase like a, uh, be budgeted.
You can, as long as, I mean, basically you just need to have the money available, which, you know, I think we do. And then we would just have to go through the just operations process if we were to do it next, if, if we didn't budget for it this year and we decided to get one next year.
But ideally, we want to know in the next month or so for the township's budgeting purposes too. Because they usually, when they go in on purchasing weddings with us, they do their half upfront. Sometimes gets us a discount or a lower price because they have cash on hand. So we kind of, do you think a month or so would give you enough time to determine if we need to go ahead and plan for one next year?
Well, I could definitely have it within the next 30 days, two weeks. I could have that all figured out and I can even, even put together some per jester cost of our town. And so it kind of gives you an idea here. Uh, because if you, if you look at the two anecdotes, it's a two different styles. They went with what's called a type one, which is the most used. And there's a type three, which is the oldest one, one we were placing. Type, they, they both do the same thing, but the type, but the type spree, which is the four, you can't align it. Uh, belly crumbling, rodent in the lap, uh, sound, please, you probably wrote it. Uh, source continuing that. Uh, it's gonna, it's gonna come to an end here in probably a couple of years. That's been their staple for years and it's lasted very well. The transit line was supposed to be their next catch-all, but it doesn't have the payload for that. Now, to not confuse you any more than what I heard it have, type one you see right now costs about 40 to $60,000 more because of that chassis versus the other chassis. So, you know, you can, you can save a little bit by going to the E series, each, uh, 450 series. Over going with the type one just on the chassis alone because it's, it's a more robust, it's a more heavy duty chassis. Is it going to give you a different lifespan? Not at all. It's going to give you the same lifespan as the other one. They're not made to be long war solutions anymore. Even if you wanted to go to the big international, the big chassis, it doesn't really give you that much longevity more. Uh, it doesn't give you resale ability. You know, typically right now, ambulances, you're looking at maybe five to $10,000 on a trade-in on ambulance. So that can help offset the costs on the very chassis. Um, but, uh, every year it seems like different manufacturers add more requirements that have to go into it. So that increases the factor a little bit. But like I said, I can give you some options and some pricing, some pricing online. So you can have a more educated uh, understanding and a decision where do you want to go. And then like I said, if that's something you want to entertain, it's definitely something that once we go to the bidding process and we go through that, um, we can definitely pick a better time that suits us financially that, and you get the best benefit for your buck. So if, if, if two years, two years worth of budget helps you, then we can, we can deal with it certain times. As long as the vehicles are holding up and have not carried any things from everyone that I talked to, that the vehicles are not, that they're actually in decent shape, but they are starting to show the square.
Yeah, that was a question that I had is as the rotation is set up currently, it would be, uh, there would be an ambulance replaced in 2022. And there's no, um, mechanical issues that would put us in a position that we're not going to wait.
Right, right. And that, and that way it would be something, maybe the 30 days are last, I can get it quickly.
Yeah. So you can rather budget ourselves and like, yes.
And wait, what, what's the current status of the fleet? You know, what is, what is pending? Where is it all at? Because when you're dealing with the ambulances and you're dealing with the, the use of it, um, even though it doesn't make necessarily at the miles, there's a calculation to formulate when you're talking hour meters. And when the vehicle just runs and sits idle, it's just as much air and air is driving it down the road. If there's just different, different scenarios. But in the ambulance industry, they went from, with those type of chassis to the huge, matter, they're smaller overall. Once you're, once you get to about 70,000 miles, whether it's top lane through your hour meter or actually on the odometer, then you start having large mechanical problems. And so you're starting to replace transmissions, you're starting to replace engines. Uh, there's two different types, gasoline and diesel. Typically, everyone's going to gasoline right now over diesel. Uh, for a variety of reasons. Uh, cost, the cost comes down versus diesel. Um, you have less, less major parts, less heavy things. They go, they, the old, the old school was like, add a diesel, it'll last forever. Um, that's kind of not the case necessarily with gas. And the 2020, or they didn't have a 2020 series, they had a 2019 and they use a V10. Now the Ford is redesigned to 2021 to a V8. And so it's a little bit more fuel efficient. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of things to weigh into that. And I can definitely put everything together. So you have as much information and education on it.
So Jonathan and Karen, I know you guys had to work on this without Jeff period. This, so this budget goes from 461 to 510. Second to get more than 10%. Is there any way? Can we, would you, would you guys be open to, and I'm asking the councilors too, we give Jeff a week or two to kind of really study this budget and see if there's any way to shave any of this? And this is, we've taken a week from 19, 2019, we were at 429. Two years later, we're at 510. It's exploding. And we had explosion before when we became Grommetic. You know, obviously the new costs were going to go up, but we've taken a couple of big leaps. Um, and I'm just, you know, just for the sake of, um, Jeff's experience, maybe, I don't know, look at the ambulance issue, look at this budget and see if there's any way to.
And, and again, that's who, you know, he does the timeline that I have to be on as far as advertising and public period. If we're advertising high and it's a matter of we're cutting back ultimately, that's fine. Yeah, it's just we can't, once we advertise the budget, we can go higher. Yeah.
And when it's the current lease ambulance paid off, we only bought that one a couple of years ago, right?
I was, and I kind of tried to think and I didn't get to my files that would have that. So I can be done, I can get it to, to look and see.
Yeah, that'd be good. Cause if we didn't, for us, I know you guys are affected upfront, open cash, but for us, if this lease one, if this one's paid off in 2022, makes that whole case for doing this in '22 a little stronger versus next year. Cause I don't think it's paid off next year. I'm guessing it's paid off in '22 or '23. I've got too many things in my head that.
Yeah, I can't remember either because a fire truck came along that time and that was kind of a.
And just going, I'm thinking on the, on the expenses, well, it is, as I get these ones from 461, but, um, this is, and you look at it, it's all in salaries and that's $60,000.
It's hard to bet that.
But it's, it's all, it's, I mean, it's almost all that. $60,000 in salaries and, um, other expenses.
Yeah, you've got three full-time employees on benefits. It changes it.
If I could, I wanted to say one other thing here. When I was looking at the budget, looking at it right now, based on the June end, uh, you know, the the 461, nine, basically it runs up just a little under $10,000. I'm already over budget. Uh, and that's total of the budget, but in several of the accounts, um, as you can see on there also, I get the same sheet as I do it. You'll see that, uh, four of those accounts, uh, excuse me, three of those accounts are current and agents. You know, some of that is, uh, like medical supplies. But that's, that's, I, I would imagine right now it's COVID related. Uh, COVID is going to be with us next year. So supply will be, that will be tight. Uh, it couldn't even go a little bit higher. Um, so really I'm thinking this, this $10,000 may turn into maybe $12,000. But depending on other different accounts, they spoke with Karen, but it's going to be many years. I still think that we can come within the budget and in the budget. Um, it's just, I'm going to need a little time to shake out the numbers and, and see where it lies. And give a, give a better picture for me because, um, just trying to find where every little dollar and spent, there's just, I'm trying to put that all together right now. So I have just a better understanding.
A big one this year was having these people out of a place there and it changed that world.
They could use one of those utility brands.
If you give $200, it would fit on the building.
That's it.
Air conditioning.
Service and air engagement.
Well, I think we should give Jeff some time to live with this and look it over and adjust it, even if it's up. And work on the ambulance, look at, you know, take a close look at if we're going to need an ambulance or not. It's a good starting place for Jeff to manipulate the budgets up or down. Maybe he's got something to work with at this point, but I think we need to give him some time. Kind of threw you into the weekend all the same time. Much more blueberry crisp.
I know Josh, Josh and Karen, that, you know, this, this brings out and trying to figure it out.
Yeah.
And I, I definitely understand where you're coming from and, you know, the council and everything. So I appreciate the, the chance to, to look at it a little more. When would you like that information back? Do you have an actual date that these are?
What about Karen, we did like Marlene and, and your group would, if we looked at this again in our last regular council meeting of the month? Do you think it's about the 24ish?
Yes, it's the 25th.
Oh, 25th?
Right, I mean.
Would that?
They won't advertise our until, uh, September 14th, I think, our meeting. Uh, we, we, we meet with the DLGF, uh, Monday. So we're going to, you know, she'll punch in these numbers. But like we said, a higher number, we can always back them if we will be advertising. Um, but the meeting is there on Monday and then our, our meeting is September.
Well, for the sake of their meeting with DLGF, should we go ahead and assume an ambulance purchase and put?
No, I mean, it doesn't make that any different. It, you know, um, actually 2022, we ordered in '21 and '22 is when actually happened in our, uh, rotation of that to buy.
We could be here in between the fire truck and another ambulance? Need, need break in there?
If you're like this, for the ambulances in my, in my year, would you like to be buying one, paying it off, then buying the next one instead of, you know, instead of having two payments or basically never gate ahead or at least you're, once you pay one off, you're buying another. So it's never, you're never overlapping unless for some reason something would happen that you have to buy.
So which one was the line I would mean we're saying that might need to go up a couple of thousand, Jeff? Were we at like 10,000 medical supplies? I think we should go ahead and change that one for now. I mean, if, if we know we've used more because of COVID, we could just.
You know, we're.
Yeah, so we.
Who went from five to seven? You want to go from seven lines?
Would that work or?
Yeah, yeah, that works.
It's just, it's just tight with the six, the six, nine right now and I'm too old. And so, you know, it's like when I talked to Karen earlier, you know, I knew this next year was going to be a rough year for the budget because I. I knew this next year was going to be a rough year for the budget because I come in and ended it here. Uh, you know, as long as, you know, there's, the ability to go back during throughout the year, if we need to for special appropriations. You know, it's not that it's going to be out of, out of question here, but I think you can think of it. And I think you might be able to shake some things down a little bit here. Because I definitely, I'm trying to get into the contractual services there and see what we're paying in contracts there because this is, if it's going to stay around with twenty thousand, it's going to go up a little bit much. And those are the more set prices that are going to be here, you know, routine. And so it's definitely something that could come down by five, six thousand easily, uh, depending on what happens. So yes, if you can grant me that pleasure, I would love to just, uh, put a little bit more due diligence into this and give you some better answers and moving forward.
All right, so we'll make one change and then we'll re-need. We just schedule it as a workshop session for the next regular meeting, maybe?
Yeah.
Got it, will that one be guys at five o'clock type thing? Three to five thirty and let's do final meeting, be fired again. Let's, let's go ahead and be fired. Thanks, Jeff.
All started on fire since Ken's down here, it's very jumping if I get something wrong, but I don't think salaries or benefits, uh, Ken had just left the, they changed there. Um, like we increased fire product supplies, uh, by five hundred. Wait, uh, lease purchase, we had the actual purchase of the truck this year, so we had two hundred forty thousand in there and then budgeted forty thousand a year. Um, basically we finished the general fund and that line hadn't crossed before. Equipment and radios, um, it's like about the same in there.
They're still waiting to hear our headquarters.
Yeah, we've talked about, talked about that, this is only that we have a grant application and it's, uh, I think all the town picks an accounting for EMS and fire radios. Um, it's like everything, almost exactly the same, other than that big change to the, um, lease purchase line.
You need something, you're going to put a, uh, separate line, I remember we talked about it last year. You're stating that eleven thousand dollars a year, ten something?
Yeah, I'm going to back this. Eleven to fifty a year. Yeah, and they've actually, um, come back and I think they're, they found a company where they would like to purchase a year from. And they would like to do, they've kind of reversed course and like to do a couple every year, sort of place of. And I, I just made the thought that maybe, I think they just thought that they wanted to make sure that they would all be the same. Um, and it sounded like they could be, they could stay within that range. And I don't think they expire or anything like, I think we had about a year, closer to that year expired, so.
So did they buy any of those?
They have not, I, I think they're, they got quote, they were going to purchase the next time.
Okay, thank you. So when I bet thirteen thousand, eleven to fifty, it goes to the, or to the uniforms.
It's for, it's for those, yeah, the outside.
So the eleven thousand we budgeted to this year would be incumbent then to next year?
It all depends on what they, when they decide to purchase. So if they don't purchase this, that sort of thing out of them, it's not going to be spent. They'll go back and, and we're just like, building it in the general lines so that when it's time to purchase, we definitely set aside for it. We don't have the same plan as you, as far as units, but.
So just go back and.
Well, they bought it at the end of the year, they, they come to the sponsor needs this year's plus next year's to buy.
Right.
Obviously the thought was set aside for four years and had that, that line build up and then first follow it at the same time.
Yeah, so technically we still had an earmark for pilot, right? Because I thought, we did talk about that.
And we made this end up, at the end of the year, it's been down on the early day. And then just earmark payers and then it's not, we're done on time, it was an accident, it's, it doesn't.
Yeah, we don't budget it for something like stellar budget.
And also, that's what I want to start doing with some of these funds too, if they, this year where we're kind of saving up for it and a bigger purchase like you guys do. And moving to the capital specifically for that purchase. It'd be a little bit more harmful, you know, let's, let's get ahead of some of this.
Yeah.
Instead of.
Well, I wish, I mean, there are some restrictions on giving you a hundred tons, so.
Right.
You cannot place in those order, you stop getting those things in process, you can't involve those tons.
Right. You're sort of treating it like we did the current budget where if they didn't spend it, but they know they're going to spend it down the road. It goes back on Wednesday or January.
And just go back to the current budget.
Yeah. Right, and you're sort of treating this part the same way. That's if they don't spend it, but they know they're going to spend it a year or two from now, it's available. Okay. As long as they're not cutting their budget. So. Should we make some cuts while Ken's not here?
Yeah.
So if, if we are going to start buying uniforms each year, that's, I mean, that's fine, it's easy to brush the budget.
Okay.
It's, um, that's fine, but we still need the fourth year there for that.
Right, okay.
Actually, we have a better, basically, now.
What?
To me, that is budget without any of it, if you go.
Well, yeah.
Break your swag, so.
Technically, I suppose. So now it's paying back that.
Right.
Purchase at forty grand a year. And at least somebody's tracking that because he's leaving. Did you guys hear that he announced he's going to retire with the fire department? Do you? Yeah. Is he moving or something or is?
No, I'm sure.
Just retirement talks are bored, a lot, school board, fire, everything. Any other questions on fire, you guys, or comments or issues?
Where's Karen?
I don't know.
I'm not sure if we moved the date and maybe I.
I called him and said keep on, I come today, but.
I didn't.
He was going into the meeting, I was probably calling him and.
I saw a little problem, I don't know anybody else in the room, but I mean, if you're going through a budget, you don't, they can't send a fumble.
Well, this was a meeting that we ended up changing at the last minute, so.
There is a real significant change in the higher.
Right.
Anything else we need to look at for you guys, Marlene?
Uh, I don't think so, we had a couple questions for Karen, other things, we talked about it there. Uh, they were mostly some encumbered funds and some money from the academy and, uh, uh, we're, we're reviewing that again now, is that right?
I sent her a request.
Are you?
I sent her a request, I don't, I'm late, but I did send her a request.
For the, uh, fire truck?
Yeah, I did that too.
The contributions, the emergency funds?
I did it just.
Yeah, they've, they've been inconsistent on that one, I don't know if they'll do it this year.
So I got a response back from Ray, he said they would be making contributions, um, but he did not discuss that much. Now for the twenty twenty one, the best for this, well, who said for twenty twenty one again, for their contributions to twenty twenty?
Right.
Right.
But they usually don't do that a lot, totally.
I think those aren't the year ends, it's June. Or their budget year ends in June instead of October. I want to get out of here. Instead of we cover everything you needed to cover today?
It rips around another area.
Yeah, with as much service as they require. Especially with the EMS.
Oh, yeah, do you guys want to talk about riverboat before we leave? Since we got the two that come out, right? So thoughts on the transportation? Boys and Girls Club, the gadget we have to do because we committed to that contractual agreement. The Lake Gage or whatever it's called. The thing that ages the lake. What's more blueberry crisp for this conversation, anyone?
So they're not covered at all, right, Karen?
We lost Bill. Yeah, so casino fund, we have transportation, Boys and Girls Club and Lake Gage, the Lake Gage, we're under contract to do it. So, once Bill decides to rejoin, Bill.
Bill, we're going to talk about the riverboat.
What we done?
The riverboat fund and what. I'm going to facilitate this conversation because I don't, I don't want to have an opinion on either of these funds.
We can discuss transportation.
Yeah, I can talk a little bit about that one. You guys remember Jackie Wright, right before she retired and before appropriately we were talking, she had mentioned at a meeting once that, uh, the number of refusals they've had in silver. And I just asked her once, you know, what would it take to get that number to zero? And that kind of got the conversation going and that's where she came up with, um, kind of that proposal of like on the highest end where we would actually provide a match to purchase a vehicle and have a van here every day. What that would cost, which she put in that letter, is thirty eighty thousand to thirty five a year. Um, versus, you know, if you wanted to have a full day where someone's here, it sounded like maybe six thousand, kind of what Rick was doing the math on there. And we've, we've done three thousand in the past and budgeted four thousand last year. Um, now that I've seen letters, actually fewer refusals than I had remembered it being in the past, I was like, close to one hundred.
Oh, and they mean refusals, they just don't have capacity at the moment or?
Yeah, it can be.
They don't have a driver or a vehicle, one or the other.
They can't do it for whatever it is.
Available, available for some.
Yeah, it wasn't, it was a much longer number than I anticipated.
Yeah, me too.
I think on the percentage of, of our percentage contribution to their overall cost versus the number of, of trips, um, see those numbers, just a little bit further disproportionate there. Um, you know, on the cost side, we're funding about one point five percent. And as the, um, on the expense side, we're at about three percent.
Well, I think especially to ask if the, once they add, when they request they add, the call from the center, call area, where is that, the street, the town hall?
Well, I know I've asked it before, but I don't, I'm not going to answer that. If they do buy cameras with Joe, I don't think it's in that letter, but.
So I know, you know, a few times if they pick my cousin up, um, a couple of years ago, they make three other stops and say, they're going to the police. And they just make those stops and then they go up and get there.
And then she says, call over everything, but I don't, I don't know if it's.
By zip code or actually in.
You think you're, I think most people know about the service. And you think they, most people know that it, also the kids up, up the block, they call it over and they're.
I don't know how they market themselves, you know?
I mean, we have a flyer. I mean, honestly, when you have more requests than you can fulfill, why, why market yourself, you know? I, I probably just feel like they're a bigger problem than they can solve. I, I don't think they do a lot of that yet.
I think a lot of people in Portland knew about it when Russell was driving, but basically the tire is expensive. Isn't doing it anymore. I think everybody's just focused like, oh, you really don't see man down there.
I've seen it on my street, probably once a week.
You do?
Mm-hmm. For some reason I see it when I'm coming back from work, which is between five and six usually.
Do they have a, a shopping day on this, Wednesday?
Wednesday.
They have, they usually have it.
It's the Wednesday afternoon.
And it's called, aren't the shops still there? The teams still see me? This year?
Yeah, it's Tuesday.
Yeah, that's on Tuesday.
There's some kid there asking me if I wanted it, I'm just like, what? Who? Was it Emily? No. I was like, seriously, I may be short and chubby, but AARP is not knocking yet. I mean, I gotta like dye my hair or something. I have this, thank you. Thank you for coming. Thanks for the good insight. So we're currently at four thousand with them?
We budgeted four thousand, they invoiced us for three.
Right.
That's interesting.
I think we had the same conversation last year, or at least of increasing the funding to try and help them offset some losses and, uh, needed income, and then they still only invoiced us for three, I don't know.
Well, I don't know, last year, Russ asked for the increase.
Yeah.
He was the one.
And then I think he probably didn't communicate that back to Jack here, I didn't.
Well, also, should we just leave it at four? Will they think there's been an increase at four? I mean, in some ways.
Say it back to three.
Yeah, I mean, I would like, if they want to, I would like something to look kind of free.
I agree.
There's a lot, here's the program, you know, we think if we're, after they.
It doesn't sound like they took their revenue.
They were suspended, they were suspended.
Yeah, this is what, yeah, what we think we can do in terms of serving the public.
I don't know.
But again, it seems, it seems.
We, we asked them one year if they could change it to Tuesday because that was one day. You know, these old people that are using the service need groceries. Right. If you're going to hand out a van that picks people up and takes them to the stores, why wouldn't they have on Tuesday?
When they can pass it from a discount.
The one place that gives us ten percent, it's happy to at least.
Yeah.
Be there to take them. I mean, why would people use it if, you know?
Yeah. So are, is it consensus to put it at three?
I'll put three. Yes. I believe in three and they can ask for more.
Okay.
And if they ask more, like, is it rude?
Well, she didn't mention anything about taking a revenue hit as a result of COVID.
Right.
Uh, it sounds like there's some CARES Act money coming in too. So it made me think there's, they might be in a better situation than pre-COVID.
Well, as she said, what, sixty percent of the loans are COVID.
Yeah. Okay, so that takes care of that. We got the Lake Gage, Boys and Girls Club, you all will discuss it because I'm way too involved in their fundraising and I apply for grants for them, so I feel like this would be part of that conversation.
I would, I'm not about to, because I don't want. I would like to see us, especially as well, um, you know, I put in a, um, query to the CRC attorney to see if there's something that we can do there. I know CRC cannot fund any operations and cannot fund salaries. Um, I've seen, we can capitalize on equipment. That's why I guess still put up a little bit of a backup on that. So that, I would expect that Chris is probably going to come and request there too. But I think, I think it's a great service as a, as a, um, you know, not the population, um, like.
But I think, I think it's a great service as a service, um, you know, not the population, um, or the. Demographics of our, our population, you know, the other school programs for the kids, I think it's terrible for. And, um, I think if they space, maybe you can target it, it's less of school. So, I mean, it's 40 plus to 5,000 dollars. And we've got the dollars in Riverboat Fund, even though, even though we know next year is going to be, um, reduced upon the revenue. I mean, still have the dollars there, they thought, it's basically sitting there, it's not really asking.
But we're literally going to get way back again. We're essentially going to get way back to the river.
As soon as the COVID, uh, falls down, the mean will increase again.
Right, I know they're going to, I mean, with what they're going to think in this year. And I don't know if, um, like, is this, um, under what the criteria, but I would agree with you with it.
You know, I, I believe.
It's about, it's the, it's the, um, talent and the.
I will tell you, we're always looking for money and one of the people we thought about was, was because the service was so hammy, it was to go out to various towns. And I went, Marlene, I talked to her, and she said, but they tried something like that 10, 10, 15 years ago to give money out like that. BLGF slapped, I mean, they gave me, BLGF slapped a hand, so we couldn't go to the 4,000, so we hear the service.
And I think, I think I reported, so wait, we reported the receipt that they have.
Yeah, this should have kind of. And I think now the townships use that against doing it, but all they have to do is set it up the same way Karen sets it up. Well, they just always do that reason, um, all of them, they do that.
Some of their funds have different restrictions in ours, but. I would also agree.
Yeah. Well, we did, the, the club did apply for an Eli Lilly grant, um, which will, if, if they get the money, it would help. We're at a hundred thousand dollar deficit mainly because we couldn't do our, our options and our kids' staff program. But Eli Lilly will, part of the categories they will cover is, um, retaining staff. We did lose staff as a result of COVID because we couldn't pay all of the staff when we weren't bringing any money in. Uh, so two of them, two of them left for other jobs. But at least if Eli Lilly comes in, they will make up for some of that gap, we're hoping anyway. So we just submitted that one, was due on Monday. And we submitted one through funding essentials through the county, which can pay for like, uh, sue, utility relief, stuff like that. And unfortunately, as a result of COVID, they moved us from one location to another, so that's going to be kind of a headache for COVID soon, but. But at least the board is still trying to raise money, it's not like they're not stimulating. But we'll see what happens. Those are the only three we had in Casino, right?
Right.
Right.
Do we anticipate anyone else coming forward for Casino funds?
Might as well.
Just like you asked.
Stay this long.
Yeah, right?
Just don't tell one.
Yeah.
Yeah, you might be the first, the first supervisor to suggest I have some casino money. That would be kind of funny.
You don't have a number vote, that.
Yeah, so Bill and I still have to sign off on the budget and that, that casino fund money is part of the budget. So you three come to a consensus on what that amount should be. Because we have to vote for this budget regardless of what you plug in there, but you need to plug that number in there, not us. So maybe you could tell Karen your opinions on that, you know?
I just think that at, at some point, we'll, at five o'clock this meeting, go through, okay, these are the budgets that I presented. And we can go through one at a time, of course, with the EMAS fire. And we can get Riverboat and ask the.
Please, please, please.
You guys can.
Okay, cool.
But you have to remember, you still have to have.
I mean, on the.
We grew up for it.
Yeah.
On the Boys and Girls.
I'm in three groups, I think.
Yeah, I, I.
Should, should we just, though, say that we approved the gauge amount and the transportation amount? Or just. Okay.
Make that change.
Yeah.
Make a change or is it, it's not the best.
Yeah. Okay. All right, well, as one of the fundraisers, we greatly appreciate you. I still got to go fund more money. It's 2,500, last week at the five, huh?
Karen, I did, um, find the invoices from Midwest, people like. I don't know, I think there's only a person here, there's only.
Still not.
We done?
Yeah, these are.
Does anyone want to take some, um, Chris to go? How about some?